Welcome everyone to the Tempe City Council and Arizona State Legislators Joint Meeting. This is a fully virtual meeting as Representative Epstein was talking about Friday, December 11th. The time is now 8:40 a.m. Due to concerns over COVID-19 exposure, the city has implemented measures to protect our community, including the closing of council chambers and limiting public attendance to electronic means only. Members of the public may attend the meeting virtually through Cisco Webex events by visiting tempe.gov/clerk for more information. Item number one is called to the audience. The city council welcomes public comment at this time only for items listed on this agenda. There is a three-minute time limit per commenter. Let's see, Madam Clerk, are there any comment cards this morning?
Mayor, we have no submissions for this meeting.
All right. Thank you so much. Then I guess we're going to go ahead and move on here to item number two, which is welcoming introductions. I'm going to quickly, before I go to any kind of a welcome here, just try to go around the room. Let me first go to the, our state legislators here in Legislative District 18. First, let me start with Senator Sean Bowie.
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning, everybody. Sean Bowie, State Senator for District 18, which includes South Tempe. Great to see you all be this morning.
Thank you. Welcome, Senator. Next up, Representative Mitzi Epstein.
Good morning. I am Mitzi Epstein and resident of Tempe, the center of the universe. And I know every person should feel that way about their hometown.
Absolutely. Thank you so much, Representative Epstein. And Representative Jennifer Germain.
Good morning, everybody. State Representative Jennifer Germain, District 18. I serve on the Government and Elections Committee and I chair the Missing and Murdered Indigenous Women's Committee. And I am going to be the ranking member on Public Safety, Military, and Veterans Affairs for this upcoming legislative session.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, Representative Germain. Also, I know we have Senator Juan Mendez from Legislative District 26.
Thank you. Well, hello, everyone. Good morning. Again, yeah, my name is Juan Mendez. I also represent, resident of Tempe from District 26, though. So I'm in North Tempe. I know my teammates will be joining us, but I think we had a little trouble getting the Webex to work. So they should be joining us shortly.
Excellent. Thank you, Senator Mendez. All right. And let's go to members of the city council. Councilmember Lauren Cubey.
Councilmember Lauren Cubey. Delighted to see you guys. It's been a long time since I've seen my legislators faces and I'm so appreciative of this opportunity to speak with you today.
Thank you, Councilmember Cubey. Councilmember Robert Arredondo Savage.
Hey, Mayor. How are you? See, I am here. I just want you to know, just good morning, everybody. Happy Friday. I hope you enjoyed the rain yesterday. That was a little odd, but just want to say welcome. Glad you're here this morning. Just really do appreciate everybody's works and efforts to really keep our community safe. It does not go unnoticed and it is greatly appreciated. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Arredondo Savage. Councilmember Joe Navarro.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, just once again, just telling everyone, thank you for being here. And obviously, these are great meetings, just to kind of catch up and making sure that we all are working together. And so I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Doreen Garland.
Hi. Good morning, everybody. I'm so happy that you're here. I am looking forward to this meeting and, and getting to know all of you better as the year goes by. So thanks for being here.
Thank you, Councilmember Garland. And I understand we now have Representative Athena Solomon from LD 26 as well.
Hi. Good morning, everyone. Thanks for having us. I look forward to these conversations. I have been a longtime resident of Tempe, so it's a pleasure to work alongside the Capitol constituents. Thanks again.
Great. Thank you, Representative Solomon. All right. Dude, I also want to make sure that we go down the line too and introduce members of our staff who are here. Marge.
Good morning, Marge Zilla, Government Relations Officer for the city.
Thank you, Marge. Rosa Chalcy.
Good morning, everyone. Rosa Chalcy, Director of Strategic Management and Diversity. Thank you for the invitation back.
Thank you, Rose. Also, I see Wydell Holmes.
Good morning, Wydell Holmes with the Strategic Management to the office. And it's a pleasure to join you today.
Also, I see Sonia Blaine.
Morning, everyone. Sonia Blaine, Deputy City Attorney. Happy to be here. Thank you.
Good morning. And I'll last but not least, I see our city manager, Mr. Andrew Ching.
Yes, good morning. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Welcome to our legislators and looking forward to a great meeting this morning. Thank you.
Right. Thank you so much, Mr. City Manager. Really appreciate it. So obviously, you know, we all know that, you know, there's an incredible amount of hard work being an elected official, especially trying to govern during a pandemic, which we all are. But we all know that this work is clearly well worth the effort in order to represent our great residents and our constituents. And, but we obviously, as the Tempe City Council, value the partnerships we have with you, our legislators, and really greatly appreciate the work that you do each and every legislative session, whether it's inside the legislative session or of course, all the constituent services work outside. So we just really want to make sure that we continue to collaborate you, with you on areas of shared interest. Therefore, it's really important that we have this meeting with you today to talk about city perspective on issues that are going to affect all of us. So you have the best and most current information to base your decisions on. And also, we want to make sure that we have some kind of interchange with you and whatever you think, information you've got from the state Capitol or things that we could do to help make your job a little bit easier, we would love to make sure that we hear from you as well today. We're really just, we're really just excited about this. It's a really great meeting. And we're, even though we talk about it, we're doing it virtually and we're trying to set an example for doing things responsibly during the time of COVID-19. We still think there can be a great exchange of ideas this morning. So wanted to thank our legislators from LD 26 and LD 18 for being here and thank you all, council and staff. And with that, I'm now going to turn it over to Rosa Chalcy and Wydell Holmes, who are going to be providing our presentation for us, which is item number three, Tempe Community Survey and Business Survey Results. So Rosa and Wydell.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'd like to echo just before starting, as a resident of 30 years with the city of Tempe and 28 years working for the city, I just want to thank you for your service. And I think sometimes that goes without being said, but I, I want to start the presentation with saying it's, it's appreciated, especially in these times. So, good morning, community survey. We, we have a community survey data that we would like to share with you. And what we'd like to do, I know we've presented before, but we'd like to give you a snapshot of what our constituents are saying about our community, our, our city. But more importantly, also leave some room to share with you how we are utilizing the data to help make decisions in the city. And the objective hopefully of today is that we want to make sure that the survey is useful to all of you. There's no reason to have surveys if we're not utilizing the data. About five years ago, our city really went through a transformation of making sure that we collect as much data, especially as staff, as public servants, to share with our officials, our city officials, mayor and council, our city manager, to make sure that they have everything at their, at their fingertips to help them make decisions. And more importantly, what this data does is help build trust with our community. So I will get started. What you receive from Marge and our city clerk is a much more comprehensive PowerPoint. What Wydell and I have done is distill that down to the most important slides in order to leave room for any questions that you may have and any suggestions that might be helpful to you as far as using the data. So with that, we'll get started. So the purpose of the survey is really to objectively review what our residents are saying or how they perceive our city. We have a lot of data in our city that helps us understand and manage our performance objectively. But we always know that what we may think of ourselves may be a little different than what our city residents and businesses are saying about that. That's why it's very important to survey their perceptions and satisfaction with our city. This data helps our city officials determine priorities for the coming year in our budget. So once again, as I mentioned, the utility of this data is just as important as collecting it. We are fortunate in Tempe that we've had city officials and our city manager really understand the importance of setting trend data. So we have been conducting this employee, this community survey since 2007. So that trend data, and you will hear me talk about that a little later, is so important as we see whether things are increasingly improving or declining over the years. The methodology of this survey is basically surveys that are sent to our residents. They take about 20 minutes. They are a sample size of about 1,153 surveys that we conduct in the city. And they're done through character areas, our eight-character areas. So we try to get a very robust sample size of those character areas. And then overall, the margin of error is, we have a 95% level of confidence. What you see before you is the location of survey respondents. So we want to make sure that our city holistically is getting the survey. And if I can pause here for a second, it's, it's interesting, over the years, what you create culturally with doing this since 2007 is now we have residents who contact our office and they almost feel like they've won the lottery when they get selected to participate in the survey. And, or they feel a sense of urgency to get it in. So I love to hear that in the calls that we do get, because I feel like that's such a connection and building trust and knowing that that means that they know our city officials are using that survey to really make decisions. And that's really imperative. So bottom line upfront, what we see with the survey is satisfaction. Our city has done tremendous work. We have about 81 respondents indicate that are satisfied with the overall services offered by the city. So what does that mean is Tempe is setting the standard throughout the U.S. for delivery of city services. So overall satisfaction is 33% above the U.S. average. Yes, 33%, which is incredible when you think about the struggles even nationally, what we've been seeing over the years. Tempe ranks above the U.S. average in 41 of the 43 areas that are, that are assessed in this benchmark. Priority based on 2020 results. So over the next year, top priorities for our city, and I always say it's kind of back to basics. And we're not surprised, given what has had happened in our nation and locally. It's, folks really want to see their condition of their streets. And not just the condition of their streets improved, but their neighborhood streets. So in my role, I've had a crash course on many operations of the city. And one of them is looking at the streets of our city that we have three categories, arterial, which are important for our emergency response, and then the collector streets, which are the streets that feed in from the arterial to their neighborhood, and then our neighborhood streets. So obviously, for public safety, for emergency response, we needed to take care of our arterial streets. But with the down, the downhill spiral of the economy in 2008, we've had to really focus priorities on the arterial and collector streets for access for public safety. And guess what? That remains then, the neighborhood streets suffered a bit. And we're trying to catch up now. So condition of streets is very important to our residents. Police services, I don't think there's one person on this call that's going to be surprised by that. And then social and human services, specifically what we see is people experiencing homelessness. So other priorities that they want us to stay vigilant of are, is the economy and businesses. Our council has very robust conversations about how do, how do we help our businesses, especially this year? But that has been a long-time effort from the council. Neighborhood, once again, what I said, people are spending more time in their homes. They want to see what is, they are now much more vigilant of what is happening in their neighborhoods. So obviously, that, that is a priority. And then traffic delays is other priorities. But what we've seen is that we have exceeded our traffic mitigation goals for this year. And not because of, I'd like to say, our own performance, but obviously, everyone's telecommuting. So major findings, satisfaction is high, opportunities for improvement always exist. And that is something tried and true about Tempe. And I can share with you, years past, we focused on being above the national average. And we have taken many of our goals, performance measures in our strategic plan and shifted them from national average to, we wanted to keep pressing ourselves and pushing ourselves to be top 10%. So what I, I'll share with you in the next slide is major findings. So overall quality for services in our city, we always like to take a broad look to see, is there a pocket of individuals in our city or a geographic area that is less than others? And, and no, we see satisfaction uniformly across the city, which is great. So the trend from 2020, 2019, and 2007, which, which I, as I mentioned, the trend analysis, for those of us who love data, we'd love to geek out and look at this data to understand a little bit more. And quite frankly, as supporting our, our departments in understanding operations as far as what they, what they've had, what, what things are looking like for our residents. Next slide. Areas of improvement. So long-term increases since 2007. So if you look at the top three, quality of wa, walking and biking, local transit, or the top two are mobility. So people are very satisfied. We've done a great job. Increase of 20 to 17 points. Overall, feeling of the safety, and I know that the policing conversation this year and the mayor's Public Safety Task Force has been a concerted effort to improving the feeling of trust with our public safety. But if you look at the trends from 2007 on, feeling of safety has improved by 15 points. Overall, feeling of safety in our neighborhoods is important. As I mentioned, people are very vigilant of our, our parks, 53 parks that we do have in Tempe. Availability of city information. And I think this is very important, especially those of us with equity lens, of how do we make sure that our residents are feeling engaged, connected with their local government? I happen to think that nationally, people feel sometimes a disconnect. And people then therefore look to their local government to feel a connection with government and policies and changes. And then their outlier, as I call it, whether people care or not, golf courses went up 10 points. But it seems to be the outlier in that long-term increases, but we appreciate all the feedback. Short-term increases since 2019, our 311 call intake went up 10 points, which is important. People are now knowing where they can go for information at any point. Transparency, that building of trust, nine points, feeling of safety in the desert parks at night and day. So all of you may not know, and the reason we ask that is all our questions in our surveys are connected to our performance measure, our strategic plan. We don't have a static strategic plan as some organizations do, where it sits on a shelf. We are constantly looking at it. It's a, it's, it's a living document. And one of the things is looking at just our people feeling safe in the parks, but we want to know specifically what parks are they? Are neighborhood parks, are desert parks? And then more importantly, for our officers, do they feel safe in the night, at daytime or at night? Ease of access to campaign, finance, and lobbyist disclosures, that might be of interest to all of you. I know our clerk's office has really worked on that also. Ease of access to open books. And what our open books is access to looking at our finances and our budget and making sure that the residents understand how we are using their taxpayer dollars. And that is that transparency piece that builds trust, as I've said before. Next slide. So I always say, open and transparent with what is good, but also open and transparent with some of the areas of decline. So I always say, gives us something to work on, right? Long-term decreases since 2007, condition of our neighborhood streets. I mentioned our pavement quality. That is really what's been the focus. And just to give you an idea, it's condition of neighborhood streets, condition of major streets and sidewalks, and quality of landscaping maintenance along streets and sidewalks. These are all areas that our mayor and council are focused on and many conversations over the year. But they're also the most expensive. Infrastructure is the most expensive for our city. So just to give you a snapshot, repaving some of our neighborhood streets is about $3 to $4 million to do one neighborhood. So in the past, it's been about $12 million that we allocate towards pavement. That means you can only do three neighborhoods. Tells you the magnitude of the expense of those things. But we are focused on it and the mayor and council are looking to try to accelerate some of those items. Overall quality of services offered by the city, it's down 7%. And we'll take a deeper dive into the data, understanding what, why that is since 2007. Quality of city library services also. And then short-term decreases since 2019. Interesting for us is services for disabilities, which is interesting because our city has gone through major investment in transition plan, which is looking at everything from infrastructure services in our city over the last three years and created a prioritization of what needs to be remediated for access for people with disability. So once again, it perhaps is a disconnect between what we're providing as far as services or communicating to our residents. Access to human services, people are concerned about those in need, especially now with, with homelessness increasing for our publics, given the pandemic and the economic impact. Library services, museum, and then programs for our community. Next slide. So overall, how satisfied, how satisfied are our residents with the city of Tempe? Tempe ranks above the U.S. average in 41 of the 43 areas. I mean, we can almost end the presentation, but no, we, we tend to always want to strive for more. And so I just wanted to make sure that while, while Tempe might want to brag, we don't see it that way. We see it as an opportunity to even do, to even improve in the areas that we are perhaps lagging in a bit. But we should celebrate our successes, which is Tempe does an outstanding job even during a pandemic year. Next slide. So priorities for the next year. So one of the things that we do is share these things prior to the budget for our council to see. So priorities for improvement. We asked the residents if they had three choices as far as where they would like to communicate for their mayor and council, what they would like to focus on, for our city officials to focus on, and our operating departments to also look at. They said the top three, the services, condition of our streets and sidewalks, once again, social, human services in our neighborhoods, back to basics, as I call it. And then this is an interesting, interesting slide I always like to share. Emerging priorities, sustaining priorities, and fading priorities. As most of us, things prioritize, are prioritized differently every year. But we also have still looking at what the importance are, the things we looked at last year. So that's basically what this slide is. Emerging priorities, as I shared, more important for this focus, for the focus of this coming year. It gives the council the four that the community or their constituents are saying about what they would like to focus on. Sustaining priorities, about the same level of importance, is the business development, city infrastructure, quality of our businesses and homes and parks. And then fading priorities is traffic delays, as I mentioned, which is, yep, if you basically lock down a city and nation, your traffic is mitigated. And traffic safety. So one of the things, obviously, when I, when looking at our strategic plan, this might be an outlier here to many of the data points that we do have. I can tell you with our EMS calls, we are exceeding our, our response times. But we know that, that it's an outlier because of the pandemic. Next slide. So overall, important satisfaction rating, we look at this in, in much detail, the ranking, condition of our city of streets and sidewalks, police services, social and human services, and our economic and business. And we do conduct a business survey, you should know, every other year, biannually. And our business, and this is actually interesting to see this come up in the community survey. So our business survey, you expect to see that, but this is a community survey. I just want to highlight that. That says our economic and our business development is very important, worth noting. So in summary, and then I'm going to turn it over to Wydell to show, to show you a little bit of the utility of how we use this with the equity lens. So overall satisfaction, once again, 81 respondents indicate they are very satisfied with our city. So I thank everyone on this call. Quite frankly, it is a group effort from not just within the city, but our, our partners. Tempe continues to set the standards for delivery of city services. Overall satisfaction is 33 above the U.S. average, as I mentioned, 41 of the 43 areas. And actually, we have just been awarded for being the top 10% of quality of services in the nation for, for looking at benchmarks of other cities. And the top priorities are condition of streets, as I mentioned, police services. And I've highlighted police services because I would like to share with you in just a second how we're using that information over all demographics. And then social and human services. So next thing I want to turn it over to Wydell, but I want to share with you, this is a lot of science, a lot of data. And one of the true things about Tempe, and I think in our DNA, and, and Representative Mitzi Epstein said best, Tempe is the heart of this area, region, right? And I think one of the best part of it is that we have a lot of focus on science and technology, but the focus is balanced with heart and equity and looking at a lot of the quality of life for people and how does that data help create better life for people? So we'd like to share with you how we're taking the data and using it to bring performance and people together with that equity lens. And I'll turn it over to Wydell, since you're probably tired of listening to me.
Rosa, and good morning, mayor, council, and legislators. One of the tools that is emerging that we're utilizing to utilize data to inform our decision-making is a Direction Finder dashboard. This is an interactive dashboard for both our employees, our community members, and also our decision-makers and policymakers like yourselves. So the dashboard creates an interactive experience for the user in regards to looking at city performance, who responded. There's some mapping as well as the benchmarks that Rosa mentioned earlier. And what's unique about this is we're one of the first cities to actually publish this for the public. There are a few cities around the nation utilizing something similar, but they, their default is to keep it internal. But we think that it's important for our residents and our business, our businesses to know where we stand and also to share with them their results as they respond to our surveys. So keeping with the theme of quality of police services, this particular slide shows that in regards to our safe and secure community or communities, council priorities, we ask the question about satisfaction of quality of police services. And while in the orange box to the upper right-hand corner, you can see that our over results are 76.1, which does exceed the national average for the last three years. We also know that there's differences among demographic groups. And this is where the equity lens comes in. It's not good enough for Tempe to only say, well, overall, for the majority, we're at 76.1%. We also want to say, well, within each demographic category, where do we stand? So the gray boxes of blue bars kind of tells you where we are with that particular question amongst the demographics. On the next slide, I'll show you that, for example, when we look at Black African-American respondents in the age group of 18 to 34, we see that their satisfaction rating is almost 20 points below the national, below our city average. And that to us means that we haven't created quite the environment yet that we would desire for everyone in our community, particularly in that age group. We will be looking at bolstering our sample size so that we have more reliability with the data. You can see that in this particular case, we had 35 records when we applied the filter. But that's part of the improvement of when you start to look at data, you say, well, we need to get more, more response and more information from other segments of our population. Further, look at this in a different angle. We also see for Hispanics overall, the, the rating for quality of police services was 72.5. But then again, when we move back to a younger demographic of 18 to 34, we drop yet again, almost that 20 points to 56.5. And so that's quite, that tells us a little bit of information about how we're communicating, how we're conducting ourselves as a city in regards to police services and what the engagement is with those 18 to 34. So it does tell us that while we're, you know, exceeding the national average in, in a lot of key areas, we do want to look at how this is in regards to each population that we serve in Tempe. And here's another example, which we found interesting, is for almost, almost quite half of our respondents, male respondents, we're also in comparison to our female respondents. So in that age group of 18 to 34, we have a lot of opportunity for improvement. So this is just one way to look at the dashboard and look at the data to inform our city decision-making and our strategies and our tactics. This is something that we are excited about launching in this new year with our employees and with our community and with our council. It also helps support our newly recognized city as a gold certified city for What Works Cities with the Bloomberg Foundation. We're very, um, proud of kind of keeping that focus on utilizing data, but really like Rosa said, balancing that with, um, our social and emotional well-being and health of our community. Mentioned earlier that, uh, our decisions are driven by our performance measures and our council priorities. I just wanted to share quickly kind of our cover page of our dashboard at performance.temp.gov. And this is our dashboard that indicates over a hundred measures that operationalize strategic priorities for the city. And say that while every city would say, oh, we, we, we think quality of life or strong community connections is important, it's how we operate, operationalize that information and that data and those efforts for our city. So for example, when we want to have a strong community connection, we look at our police trust score. And so continuing with the police quality of police services, while in our community survey, we were, um, exceeding the national average, we also do a monthly sentiment survey. And one of the areas of improvement that we're looking at is also to look at this monthly sentiment survey across all demographic areas. You can see right now that our target is to have our, uh, confidence in our police and our trust between eighty and a hundred percent. Right now, we're at seventy-three. So again, we see opportunity. So while one data set tells us we're doing better than the national average, we have kind of a, a more local data set on a more monthly basis that can kind of tell us real-time data as well. So while the community survey puts us kind of looking in the rearview mirror, the monthly sentiment survey can tell us where we are here and now. And so this is data that we're using to inform our Public Safety Advisory Task Force that the mayor has set up and that we've been conducting over the last two months. Apparently, uh, Rosa mentioned, um, our office in particular, but across the whole city, we look at, um, our service through an equity lens. And this is an example of an emerging, uh, data tool that we, we are starting to introduce to our, to our staff as well as to the city council, where we can look at poverty rate, um, and then accessibility for public schools or for our Valley Metro Orbit routes. And this is just one example where we can overlay demographical information in a visual way so that we can look at assets and services and programs and see where they fit across our community. Um, it's one thing to think we're doing well. It's another to be able to see it, um, in a visual context in regards to where do we, where might we have gaps or holes for improvement that we can address through policy and programs and even shifting our resources in the budget process and in our, for our programming. So those are some of the data tools, again, that we're utilizing to inform our decision-making. We would invite you to utilize these tools as well, uh, for your constituents. Uh, we're very happy to speak with you further, um, in regards to some items of particular interest that you may have. And with that, I will turn it back to Rosa.
Thanks, Widel. So at this point, we just wanted hopefully to bring, as Widel said, show you some tools that we have, um, and trend data. Trend data is very important. And I always say, one of the hardest things is try to explain to the public the reasons for decisions. But once you have the data, it helps people understand the reasons for a decision. And the byproduct of all that is you're building trust. So with that, I will turn it over right back to the mayor for any questions or, or anything else. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Rosa. Thank you, Widel. Just a couple of quick things. I want to first do another introduction and then I want to circle back to a, uh, to a question slash comment. Uh, I know we also have Representative-elect, uh, Melody Hernandez, if she just wants to introduce herself.
Hi, can everyone hear me and see me okay?
Yes.
Awesome. Uh, so just as a quick disclaimer, I am at work, so there's always the chance that I could get dispatched and have to head out. Um, but hi, yeah, Melody Hernandez. I'm very excited to be an incoming legislator to learn more how we can partner with Tempe City Council. Um, Tempe is my home, so I have a little bit of a sweet spot for this, um, for this city. And yeah, so, so far, great meeting and I'll let you get back to it, Mayor Woods, and, um, thank you.
Excellent. Thank you so much. And next up, I want to turn to, uh, Councilwoman QB. I know you had a comment or question.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, and to Representative-elect Hernandez. It's so, it's so compelling to have a first responder, an EMT expert, um, in the legislature, legislature chair representing us. It's very unique and I'm glad to see you there. So, yeah, I just wanted like a sort of a cautionary note and, you know, the community survey is a tool and I, I think it's a robust tool, but recognizing that, you know, we, we know from social science research that not usually a self-select a group or it's people that are really keenly interested in paying attention that tend to respond to surveys. So that can sometimes skew the data. I don't say that's under the community survey at all. I mean, the trend analysis is really, really important. Um, and it shows, it definitely gives us directions. Um, but it's also cautionary to know that, you know, it's just a tool and just followed that, you know, back to the basics mantra that we would, our, our tagline happens to be Tempe, the city that makes waves in the desert. And it's important to recognize that it, while it gives us some information, it's not the be all end all. To that, there's a program we created with innovation funds and called Equity in Action. And Rosa's office and, and Braden K., the Office of Sustainability are central in that program. And we actually, we pay justice organizations and individuals within those organizations to engage in, in decision-making with us, not necessarily about individual minute decisions that we make in a week-to-week or a month-to-month basis, but on a lot of planning related to climate action, related to, um, urban forestry, related to, to, to all, you know, the big sort of major initiatives that we have. And I think we're unique in Arizona with our Equity in Action program, and I think it's fundamental. And not only is it helping to bring in more community, um, decision-making, and we know that in our community survey, people thought there was, you know, we needed to work on that. But it also, also helps to build up leadership within communities. People recognize their, their, the worth of their comments, that they're not just a seat at the table, but they are the table that builds more trust in government. So it has a lot of, you know, residual effects too. But I just want to salute Rosa's group for, um, all the work they do for helping, uh, to guide us and for also recognizing that, you know, everything is a tool. It's not the be all, end all. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Councilwoman QB. Uh, any other members of council or any of our legislators have any comments or questions about the data presented? Go ahead and cycle through here just to see if I see any hands. Okay, it looks like, it looks like none from what I can tell. So once again, uh, Widel, Rosa, I wanted to thank you very much for the presentation. Great data. And I know it will definitely inform a lot of our work moving forward. So thank you so much for all your efforts.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilwoman QB.
I really goofed. Um, Representative Hernandez is not, uh, is not an EMT. She's a paramedic, so I'm so sorry.
All right. Thank you so much, Councilwoman QB. All right. Next up here, I want to make sure I'm following the agenda. We have item number four, which is our state legislative priorities. That will be presented by our state legislators. Does anyone want to raise their hand to start?
Mr. Mayor, this is your host, Alex. I might need to give just some instructions to our guests. If this is your first time utilizing the WebEx feature on, if you display your panelist, uh, feature on the bottom right-hand corner, there should be almost like a megaphone that you can click on where you could raise your hand or not, uh, just as an FYI, or you can just simply unmute yourself and the mayor will proceed. Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you, Alex. So yeah, I kind of, I kind of look at the participant list, whatever, if you want to raise your hand, but I also will, uh, flip through the screen sometimes to see faces. I think I saw Senator Mendez raise his hand, uh, that he'd like to go. So I'm going to go ahead and, uh, turn it over to him.
Yeah, uh, thanks, everyone. Um, this is a great opportunity and, you know, we really need to be doing this kind of coordinating and huddling. But, uh, I, I mean, it's, uh, we're like less, it's either exactly a month away or less than a month away from session starting. And the, uh, the Republicans in charge haven't put together a plan or haven't really told us what they're going to do in regards to if the session's going to be any different. So it's really hard to plan around that. I mean, I would almost plan that they won't have a plan in place. Um, but, uh, you know, I'm, I'm still going to try to focus on housing, e- especially because of COVID. It might, uh, might make it easier for, uh, the conversation to exist outside of the committee so it doesn't get, uh, shut down and just committee. Uh, but so that, that's, I mean, I, I'm still going to try to do something to support, uh, Newtown community development, but I guess I'll, I'll branch out, uh, in terms of just o- all other housing protections that are needed because of COVID. Um, so, you know, I, I, anything, I, I love the, the support that, that the city's been, um, um, giving residents and, uh, and businesses. So I'll look for ways to complement that. Um, you know, I'm not really trying to reinvent the wheel. Um, but, uh, I mean, if there's anything that you guys need on the legislative side to help with your housing efforts, I would, I mean, just let me know and I'll, I'd love to support that.
Thank you so much, Senator Mendez. Yeah, I'm, that's really exciting news. And I know you've been a longtime supporter of affordable housing and Newtown, which is one of our longtime community partners. I know they just celebrated their twenty-fifth anniversary. They've got a, a really exemplary new executive director, uh, Stephanie Brewer. And, uh, you know, I know that th- this council's going to be discussing a proposal regarding, uh, uh, affordable housing on January fourteenth called Hometown For All, which I think, I think we all believe will really, uh, revolutionize the face of affordable housing, not only in our community, quite honestly, but, uh, hopefully will create a blueprint for other East Valley communities and throughout Arizona to really place the focus and emphasis on affordable housing that I know this council has, but obviously you have it. I know all of our state legislators have as well. So I just wanted to say thank you, uh, so much for your efforts on this and for your support. Um, let's see, I'm going to go to Representative Jennifer Germain.
Thank you so much, Mayor Woods. Um, I'm wondering though if, uh, Councilwoman QB had a question for Senator Mendez, if that's why she raised her hand.
You got it. Like I can turn back to Councilwoman QB, then I'll circle back with your representative.
Oh, oh, thank you so much. Um, yes, it was just about affordable housing and just want to thank our delegation, our, our legislators for pushing to help replenish the Affordable Housing Trust Fund in last year's session. I know, I think was it fifteen million got put in and originally, you know, a few years back, it was fifty-one million before it was swept. Um, I know all of that money went to rural legislators. It's sort of a, you know, we know how that works. Um, and so I know housing advocates all over the, the state are pushing for a replenishment of that fund. I know that's uppermost in your mind, but I want to just thank you for continuing to push for that.
Excellent. Thank you, Councilwoman QB. Uh, I'm going to circle back now with Representative Germain.
Thank you so much, Mayor Woods and Council, and really wanted to underscore and push again on the low-income housing. Um, and, and thank Mayor Woods and former HUD Secretary Julian Castro for having really deep conversations with us about how the state can support cities in developing low-income housing and how we can, um, move more people from housing crisis into housing stability. So, um, also another big focus is going to be, uh, working with the Commerce Authority on grants for micro businesses, which are businesses with less than fifteen employees. They are the bread and butter of our economy. They employ over half of Arizonans and really making sure that we are supporting the smallest of small businesses, um, to survive this crisis. We have a consumer confidence crisis. Our consumers do not feel safe going shopping. And we really do need to support those small businesses so that they can come out of this on the other side and still have their businesses. Our Missing and Murdered Indigenous Women's Committee, uh, finished our, our study committee and our report, and I wanted to thank, uh, Tempe PD and interim Chief Glover for participating with us in, in this research. Uh, we were led by an amazing group of professors and students from Arizona State University. We really want to, to highlight the amount of indigenous students who participated in this research study because we, we had a significant amount of students participating. I'm going to post the link to the five-hundred page report in the chat, and that also contains forty policy recommendations for law enforcement and how we as a state can go about performing victim services and really making sure that our law enforcement agencies are hearing and paying attention to, to people when they say they are a victim of crime and really properly surrounding them with, with victim advocates and services so that they can get restitution.
Excellent. Thank you, Representative Germain, and thank you also for all of your work and thank you for also posting the link to that report. So there it is right there. So feel free, everybody, to take a look at that in the chat or make sure you can save it for, uh, to take a look at later as well. Uh, next up, we have Representative Solomon.
Thank you, Mayor Woods, uh, so much. And Council, thank you for the presentation. I always appreciate seeing the information, um, and, and for teasing out the information on what our young residents are, are thinking because we know that our young residents have experienced a world much different than our older residents with the austerity measures that the conservatives have pushed over the last decade to the more militarization of law enforcement that we've seen throughout our state. Uh, so I just wanted to highlight some of, um, the many legislative priorities that, uh, I will be advancing and championing this session. Uh, I'll continue to introduce my legislation, um, to reinvest state monies into the Affordable Trust Fund. Um, I'm very glad Councilwoman, uh, QB highlighted that the fund used to be, um, in the tens of millions. Uh, the Democratic Caucus, we've had, uh, continued to, through my legislation, propose anywhere between thirty to forty million dollar investment into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Um, but unfortunately, we see a much lower investment by our conservative colleagues into that fund, which, um, is why we continue to see a lot of residents, uh, in District Twenty-Six, including Tempe, uh, struggle to make ends meet and struggle to keep shelter over their head. So we will continue to advocate, um, housing priorities. Also, I will be continuing on. This is my, um, third term being on the Elections Committee, and this will be my second term as the ranking member on the committee. We anticipate a lot of, uh, attacks on our election system, um, by the conservative majority, uh, but we are feeling optimistic and hopeful in, uh, trying to prevent some of those from being signed into law. Things that we anticipate happening is, um, the severe limitation, limitation, uh, or destruction of our, uh, high-quality, very secure vote-by-mail system that Arizona has piloted, oh, um, for more than twenty years, um, but the no-excuse absentee voting since two thousand and seven. Uh, uh, we anticipate attacks on voter registration. Um, so we will remain very diligent because we know Tempe residents, uh, very much rely on vote-by-mail. In fact, I believe that the whole council elections are conducted exclusively through the mail, um, with opportunities to replace ballots or still be able to do that in person. Um, so, and, and we'll continue to advance efforts to, uh, expand our democracy through same-day voter registration and automatic voter registration. Uh, but unfortunately, with this majority, we are not sure, uh, not too confident on how far those pieces of legislation can, can get. So to be determined. I would say the last two topic areas that I have been very involved in is unemployment, um, insurance reform, um, making sure that we are upgrading the, um, very broken decades-old antiquated technology system that is, uh, in part, the reason why I have constituents who have been, who are still waiting for unemployment checks, even though they are eligible, um, because of the conservatives' failure to upgrade the system, uh, in many opportunities that they had to do so before the pandemic. Uh, so we will continue to advocate and, and try to, uh, improve that system. In addition to making sure that our, uh, criminal justice system is also, um, being prioritized this upcoming session. Uh, as we know, that is one of the areas where it is near impossible to follow the CDC guidelines and, um, we are seeing outbreaks all across the state. Uh, and so we just need to continue to monitor and advance changes in the system. So, uh, not only do people, not only are people not harmed behind bars, but as we know, uh, it is a community, is an ecosystem. So the people who work within the prisons go back into the community, and we just want to make sure that we're slowing the spread of COVID nineteen. So thank you, Mayor Woods. I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Representative Solomon. Um, and now your, your priorities absolutely aligned with those I know of the city council in terms of, you know, protecting election integrity and, uh, supporting affordable housing and many times people who don't have as much of a voice in our community. So one of the, thank you for your continued work down at the state capitol, uh, on behalf of Tempe and on behalf of all of our residents. So thank you. Um, anyone else here in item number four, um, any other legislators like to talk about their upcoming legislative agenda?
I can speak next because no one has raised their hand.
Yes, I'm going to go, so I'll go to Representative-elect Hernandez and then Representative Epstein after that.
Okay, awesome.
Okay, awesome. So like I mentioned earlier, or as Councilwoman QB mentioned, I am currently working as a paramedic and having been a first responder on the frontlines of the pandemic since day one. You know, I've watched our health care system become increasingly exacerbated. I think it was yesterday or the day before that Arizona hit number one in COVID cases in our entire nation. So one of my biggest legislative priorities will definitely be focusing on healthcare and on advocating for protections to be put in place. And I mean, in addition to that, some of my other focuses are going to be securing economic relief. I love that Representative Germain brought up the importance of protecting our small businesses. That is something that I hope to work with her and our other legislators on with. And as Representative Solomon mentioned, we are anticipating a lot of voter suppression bills. So I hope to assist my seatmate and other individuals with that. And you know, right now I am in that stage where I'm a legislator and learning the legislative process more in depth. And so please feel free to reach out to me via email or phone call down the road. And I can definitely give you more specifics on future legislation going forward. But as of right now, that's, those are kind of my priorities. Oh, and I do want to mention, so I did see that Tempe is very focused on what is happening with our police services. I do want to note that I will be on the Judiciary Committee this year. And I anticipate that we will probably get bills in relation to police services. So I will keep you all updated as much as I possibly can regarding those bills. And if you have any questions pertaining to them, please feel free to reach out.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Representative-elect Hernandez. Really appreciate it. Just looking forward to having you down at the state Capitol for your, for your first session. So thank you so much. Next up, I've got Representative Epstein.
Great, thank you. I am happy to be talking with our city council members again. It's always important that we keep up this communication. So many bills come across my desk on Ways and Means that impact the cities quite a lot. And previously Commerce also, but this year, no more Commerce Committee for me. I will be on Land, Agricultural, and Rural Affairs. Having always lived in cities and suburbs, I look forward to learning a lot in that committee. However, my biggest priorities this year are going to be housing. I'm so glad to hear, everybody has mentioned that. I know that is, our whole caucus is focused on the fact that we have to do something about affordable housing in Arizona. And I know that we need a long-term and a short-term. So we have to refill the Housing Trust Fund and far better than the 15 million, although that's a step in the right direction. You know, in the past, it was 80 million in the Housing Trust Fund every year. And what a difference that can make if you stop people, give them the money for their rent, rather than letting them become homeless and then they lose a job and you know. So housing is going to be very important. The League of Cities and Towns has taken on the resolution to support Lytech. I didn't hear some members talk about that, so I'll be interested to hear what Tempe's take is on Lytech. Education funding is imperative. Our superintendents have been talking with us about the shortfalls they're facing, possibly as early as January. Teaching this way in a pandemic is expensive and we're going to need to support our schools. Of course, small business help. The caucus has some small business loan options that we're looking into, especially for businesses with 15 employees or fewer. We have some tax accountability bills that we think will help with that. And I have a bill I've been working on to help keep bars and gyms open instead of having them be closed just because, well, your liquor license is this type, so you have to be closed down. That really didn't help anybody. There's a better way to do that. And the way is to have the enforcement, to have the inspectors going and being supportive, more supportive like an OSHA program where your OSHA inspector can go and help you figure out how to be more safe. Same thing with COVID. We need COVID inspectors that are there to partner with businesses and help them be safe and help them be open. So we're working on that. And then finally, I'm the great bearer of bad news about the budget. Our Unemployment Insurance Trust Fund is within moments of being insolvent. DES predicts it will be insolvent in the first week of January. Therefore, we, we absolutely must put money into it. We have a promise we absolutely will keep to get these benefits to people who have earned them because they've lost a job through no fault of their own. And so it is to the tune of about a billion dollars. And in a budget that's in the ballpark of 12 billion, that's not a small undertaking. So we have, there's several places we can go to get that. My first choice is Congress. So we've written a letter to Congress, our Arizona delegation, saying, please send us 1.5 billion dollars for our trust fund to shore it up. And we've had a meeting with Senator Sinema's office, who, when this letter was described, she said, yes, please send us that. We need that specific details, information from the states so we know how to negotiate with our colleagues. So there you have it.
Thank you, Representative Epstein. A couple of things about what you said. I know the city last year supported the Lytech. And for anyone who's watching right now, the low-income housing tax credit legislation down at the Capitol. And we're definitely going to continue supporting that this year because it's very much in alignment with this council's legislative principles. And we appreciate your support as well. We've had several projects, especially in Tempe, built along Apache Boulevard with Lytech funds. And so we definitely want to make sure that we continue supporting that because it's been a real catalyst for additional kind of affordable and attainable housing opportunities in our city. And I think it's going to continue to play a big role. And I know that Marge Zilla will definitely make sure to reach out to you, Representative Epstein, and all of our legislators with, in terms of talking about continued support and advocacy for that legislation. And one thing I wanted to thank you for as well, Representative, is putting context around a number. Because I think that's, and what I mean by that is, you know, we talked about the 15 million dollars that Arizona put back into the State Housing Trust Fund, which sounds like a lot of money. And what, no one's saying 15 million dollars isn't a lot of money. But I think, you know, your point of saying at one point it was 80 million. And, and, and from a comparable standpoint, one of my best friends from college runs an affordable housing company out in Massachusetts. And so whereas we put 15 million in last year, Massachusetts put in over 1.2 billion. And so that's, I appreciate what you said though, because sometimes if someone hears the number like, well, what are we complaining about? It's 15 million dollars. That sounds wonderful. But it's not, you know, but when you talk about, you know, the legislature, many times people who are sweeping that money for years. And when we look at what a lot of other states are doing, I agree with you that our level of investment and reinvestment has to be a lot higher. So I really appreciate you not just placing more emphasis on the fact that we got to support more affordable housing in Lytech, but also for you adding the much-needed context around this issue. So thank you for your, your leadership on that. Let's see, anyone else legislators here want to talk about upcoming legislative priorities? Oh, let's see, Councilwoman QB.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention with the federal Lytech program that I'm hopeful with Representative Fudge is the, is the secretary-elect, but we might see, see some more federal reinvestment. And those tax credits are so competitive. And I know that Valor on 8th, congratulations, Mayor Woods and Councilmember Robin Arredondo Savage for being the chief instigators behind Valor on 8th. But I know they captured the Lytech tax credit and perhaps Tempe Community Action Agency offices. So I'm hopeful that in a new administration, we might see some infusion there into the Lytech, federal Lytech program. I just wanted a note of thanks to Representative Solomon because I had a number of Tempe residents who contacted me about problems with unemployment and not getting it. And frankly, some of the calls were desperate. And so I referred them to her office and the constituent services that she does and just, and does personally to intervene and to explain and to work with the residents was, was really outstanding. So I just want to thank her for that.
Thank you, Councilwoman QB. All right, let's see, one, let's see, we will move on here to the last item on our agenda. We got about roughly 20 minutes left to make sure that I'm respectful of your time. But the last item on the agenda here is item five, legislative partnerships between our state legislators and city council. And so I wanted to see if anyone wants to take the lead on that item here. We'll give you one second. So anyone want to take the lead on that? I mean, things that, you know, that frankly, that you can think of between our city council members and our state legislators from LD 26 and LD 18, things that we should be partnering on for the upcoming session. So let's see, Councilwoman QB has her hand up.
Sorry, I don't mean to monopolize. But yeah, it's SB 1350, the short-term vacation rentals bill. And last year, there was an effort to amend that. It seemed like the Republicans in legislature actually open to make some substantive changes. There were some tweaks made the year before, but I know because of COVID, that action was stopped. So I just wanted to throw out there, perhaps if Senator Bowie is on the call, Representative Epstein, I know you've been active in that as well. If, is there any possibility of having reforms to that? Because many of our residents see it as an existential threat to our neighborhoods.
I'll just offer, I'm, I'm not hearing a lot of movement on that. So I'm not feeling terribly hopeful. And I honestly don't expect us to cover a lot of topics this legislative session because of COVID. If that's the responsible thing to do, is for us to not be there in person too much. But to the extent that we can really try to get work done virtually, this is certainly an important priority because you're right. It's, it, it, people feel it, it's in a backyard. You know, backyard and pocketbook issues are the ones that affect people's lives so much. And this is definitely a backyard issue, so it's top of mind.
Thank you, Representative Epstein. I see Representative Solomon.
Thank you, Mayor. And I believe Senator Mendez also had legislation to try and regulate and roll back some of the short-term rentals crisis that we've been seeing in Tempe. To the extent that the legislature does cover this topic and cover this issue in my committee, the Government and Elections Committee, we do anticipate those pieces of legislation going through that committee with Chairman John Kavanaugh from Fountain Hills, who's taken an interest in the topic. So I will be working very closely with the city of Tempe. I, I also know Representative Germain is on that committee alongside me as well. So we'll be, to the extent that we see legislation, we'll be working closely with our partners at the city to try and make sure that we're seeing some more opportunity for cities to regulate and for us to, to hold these companies accountable that are treating residential zones as if they're commercial zones.
Excellent. Thank you, Representative Solomon. Representative Germain?
Thank you so much, Mayor Woods. And, and yes, to, to Representative Solomon's points, we did see some reforms come through last year and those reforms did not make it over the finish line because of COVID. So we are going to be working closely again with Marge and with the city council to make sure that we are focusing on those reforms. But another area where I did want to ask for the city council to back us up is we are going to be pushing for additional veterans benefits counselors. And that will bring money directly into the city through increased tax revenue because these are the benefits that our veterans have earned and they are not able to access because they're having trouble navigating the systems. So we've, we've, the Joint Legislative Budget Committee estimated that it's about a billion dollars in missed income that is coming to the city of Arizona. So we, we really do need to get these veterans benefits counselors in place so that they can help our, our veterans who live here in the city of Tempe.
Excellent. Thank you, Representative Germain. One quick note on the short-term rentals. I had a meeting about, probably about a month and a half or so ago with five different East Valley mayors. And I know the, there's a letter that's been circulating that I know I've signed along with a bunch of us talking about the regulation of short-term rentals and making sure that we're holding a lot of these companies accountable for exactly what Representative Solomon talked about, that many times they're unfortunately turning some of our residential neighborhoods into sort of commercial enterprises and therefore changing the quality and the character of our communities. And so we've, we've heard from a lot of people, very negative impacts in both North and South Tempe. And I'm sure throughout all of the, all of our, you know, our surface area here. So hopefully that letter does provide a little bit of additional support to our legislators that I know that myself and so many other mayors have signed on. And I think we'll be working through the Arizona League of Cities and Towns. So I just wanted to kind of put that out there. Let's see, Councilwoman Garland.
Hi, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say something regarding what Representative Germain just said about the veterans benefits. I'll do whatever I can to help you with that. I had to help my father navigate that system and holy smokes, that was a difficult thing. And the sad thing was, he retired from the Navy in 1976, but he thought that that meant he was automatically a member of the VA and could take care of, could be participate in benefits. He had no idea until the last two and a half years of his life that he was able to have those benefits and they could have really helped him in the past. So I would love to do anything I can to help you with that. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman. And I just wanted to echo that because my grandfather had the same exact issues. And we need to make sure, especially our older veterans are taken care of.
Excellent. Thank you so much. And I know, trying to think too, you know, Representative Germain and Councilwoman Garland, I know that, you know, Councilmember Arredondo Savage was, you know, part of, you know, starting the Tempe Veterans Commission here in the city of Tempe, and she's still very much active. So I think there might be a way to kind of weave her into some of those efforts as well. So I think that would be great, getting to get the start of a very good coalition here. Anyone else, anything under item number five, priorities, partnerships for the upcoming legislative session? Okay, not hearing any. I'll say going once, going twice. All right, well, with that said, just to make sure, we can probably wrap this up a little bit early and even give you a few minutes back in your day. But I mean, just in terms of a little bit of a wrap-up of some of the items we talked about, you know, we spoke about short-term rentals, home-based business preemptions, HERF, which are Highway User Revenue Fund, resources, affordable housing efforts, and obviously tax policy and the budget. And so I mean, those were just a number of the subjects covered during the last sort of hour and a half. But just really appreciate frankly, our state legislators being such amazing partners down at the Capitol, you know, advocating for us, advocating for, advocating for Tempe residents and doing everything you can to make the city and frankly, this region and this state an even better place to live and to make sure that all the places we represent are great places to live, work, or play, or raise a family. So I just wanted to thank that all of our legislators here from Districts 26 and 18 for all of your continued efforts. And obviously, whatever you need, please feel free to reach out to us directly. Please feel free to reach out to Marge, who handles our entire legislative agenda for the city of Tempe. I wanted to see if I could turn it over, any last comments for, for anyone before we go ahead and adjourn for this morning? All right, with that being said, once again, thank you, everyone, for being here. I'll go down the list here. Senator Sean Bowie, Representative Betsy Epstein, Representative Jennifer Germain, Senator Juan Mendez, Representative Athena Solomon, and Representative-elect Melody Hernandez, and to all of the city council and our staff for being here. Really appreciate your time. We just look forward to a continued great partnership for the upcoming legislative session. Thank you so much and have a wonderful day.